7:30, I'll call this meeting to order. Tonight we have two public hearings that have been advertised for 7:30. I'll take them in order as they appear on the posted agenda. I'll start out by introducing the board. On my right is Tony Kenahan. On my immediate left is Howard Anderson. On my left is Jerry Stetson. And our recording secretary is Donna Carter. And I'm Hugh Hurley, the chairman. This is a public hearing. In fact, it's going to be, it is being videotaped and will be available either on the West Bridgewater Cable Network or within a few days afterwards, they post it on YouTube. If you want to go back and see anything, it's all public knowledge. This is a public hearing. We will have the proponents make their presentation. The board will have some questions and ask them. And then at that point, I'll open it up to the public. I ask it, you ask the questions to the chair. And I hope that we can answer your questions or the proponents can answer your questions. And we'll take it from there. With that being said, who is here representing 586 Manly Street? You are.
Yeah. Okay. I'll just do a quick intro and then turn it over to our team.
Yes.
So, thank you to the board for having us here tonight. My name is Matt Davis and I work at National Development. Despite the name, our firm's actually a local developer here. We're based in Newton and we do projects primarily in the greater Boston region and pretty much exclusively in New England.
Okay.
I'm joined here today by my colleague Sherri Clancy, Paul Matos from Allen &amp; Major, the civil engineer, and Jason Adams from McMahon, the traffic engineer. And we're presenting 586 Manly Street, which is the redevelopment of a contractor's yard into a warehouse building. Paul will talk a little more about the specifics, but we've had a good relationship and communication with the town to date. We had a department head meeting a few months ago and got some feedback that we've incorporated into our plans. And we also have started a conservation commission process. And we will be going to the next conservation commission meeting pending any feedback from the planning board. We generally did not have comments from the commission. So with that, I'll turn it over to Paul, who's going to kind of walk through.
Okay. Just a minute.
Sure.
One of the things I didn't do was the legalese.
Oh.
And let me read the notice.
Yeah.
Into the record. This is public notice as it appeared on in the Brockton Enterprise on September 13th and the 20th. Town of West Bridgewater, notice of public hearing. Notice hereby here pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 48, Section 9, Section 4.6 of the Water Resource Protection District, that's the West Bridgewater zoning, and Section 7.2 Site Plan Approval submitted by Allen &amp; Major Engineering on behalf of ND Acquisitions LLC. The West Bridgewater Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October the 5th at 7:30 PM in the McDonald Brown Conference Room at Town Hall. The intent of the plan is to construct a new 210,000, 210,600 square foot warehouse building for the property located at 586, 596 Manly Street. A special permit is required for activity in the Water Resource Protection District. The site plan review is part of the permit process. A copy of the proposal is available at the office of the town clerk for review. All interested parties are invited to attend and is signed by the planning board. Thank you. Keep things legal.
Good evening. This is Paul Matos of Allen &amp; Major Associates. Again, the property is identified as 586, 596 Manly Street. It consists of two lots, map three, lot 15, which is about 15.3 acres, which is basically the back portion of the property, which includes some wetlands here. And then there's a smaller lot, map three, lot 22, which is the front portion here of this lot here, totaling about 19.9 acres. Again, as mentioned in the legal ad, the property is located in industrial zone and within the Water Resource Protection Overlay District. The property is currently developed and it's being used as a contractor's yard with an office building that's located in the front here. There's an existing barn that's here and some garages. And then the rest of the property has been claimed over with recycled asphalt and is being used as a contractor's yard. The property was before you in 2019 and 2020, just a brief history. In 2019, they came in before you for an A&R, but they subdivided the property into those two lots that I just mentioned. In 2020, there was a special permit, a site plan review for work within the Water Resource Protection Overlay District and inside the industrial zone. And in 2020, they went to the conservation commissions for a general construction permit and also for a notice and attempt to fill some wetlands that was located here in the middle of the property. So as discussed, the property is going to be a complete site demolition. We're proposing a 210,600 square foot building. It's going to be about 702 feet long by 300 feet wide, with the short side being parallel with Manly Street. We are proposing two axes to the property. The subway axis will be used for standard parking, 24 feet wide. We are proposing 269 parking spaces. Zoning requires 268. The northerly entrance would be used for the semi trucks going towards the back, which will be used for loading area, loading docks and trailer parking up here. As part of the project, we are proposing 37 loading docks here along the back. They're all sized at 13 and a half feet wide by 50 feet wide. 45 trail spaces along the northerly property line, which are all 12 feet wide by 50 feet wide. All standard parking spaces are nine by 18 feet. We are asking that the board consider us not to construct all 269 parking spaces required by zoning. We're asking for 168 spaces to be constructed, which are basically the front portion here along the subway property line, along the subway face of the building. We are proposing this 24-foot accessway to provide emergency access to the back of the building and provide continuous loop around the building for emergency purposes. The 101 parking spaces that we are looking for to be put in the bank, to be constructed later, are located here on the westly side of the building and also along this northwest corner of the property, which are going to be, again, the whole system, drainage system has been designed for full compliance to be constructed as pavement. We're looking for a waiver not to be constructed at this time. The project will be served by Menace Water along Manly Street. We're also proposing a private onsite septic system that will be located here at the east corner of the building. And then our proposed stormwater management system will be located here on the westernly side underneath the loading area and this parking area and these trays here. The stormwater management system has been designed to be in compliance with the West Bridgewater regulations as well as MS4, where we'll be treating the one-inch recharge over the entire impervious surface of the entire property. The whole proposed development is going to be occurring on 12.33 acres of the total of 19.8 acres of the property. So because we're located in the Water Resource Protection Overlay District, the drainage system has been overdesigned to provide the maximum acceptable treatment. Under stormwater regulations, you're required to provide 80% TSS removal. We're overachieving that by providing 93% TSS removal. Stormwater regulations require separation, two-foot separation, but because we're in the overlay protection district, we're providing four-foot separation, the estimated use in the high water table. And we are meeting all pre-development flow conditions prior to development in the 2019 plan under peak flow rates and volumes. I do have other plans here that do show landscaping. Landscaping, again, was done by a landscape architect from our office. We're showing a variety of shade trees within the parking lot, shrubs throughout, evergreens located on the perimeter, and then some perennial plants and grasses across the rest of the property. Parking lot has been designed in accordance with the West Bridgewater regulations. We're exceeding the separation to the property lines here and we provide some interior landscape and islands here. We also do show on our site layout plan, we do show snow storage locations throughout the property. So we have designated areas on the plan here for snow storage along the front, along the perimeter here. And then we also have another area here for snow storage along there, along the perimeter here and along the front, and this front here for snow storage. We do have a dumpster and compactor located here at the northwest corner of the building that will be accessed from the truck chassis. And I do have a grading plan. I'm not sure if you want to see that, but we also do have other plans within that set that include.
Yeah, we'd like to go over the grading.
Okay.
One thing is the relationship of the site to Manly Street.
Yeah. So Manly Street is located around elevation 515 and a half, I mean, 115 and a half here and it goes down to elevation 105. So basically, we have a driveway entrance coming in, going in at four and a half percent down to get to an elevation where we're going to depress the building as it relates to Manly Street. So the building, finished floor is set to be at 102.67 as it compares to Manly Street, again, being 115 and a half at the suddenly entrance and 105 at the northerly entrance.
Along, what is the slope?
Along, yeah, that's a three to one slope.
Okay. And what is your slope coming out with the truck traffic is coming out?
That's going to be a six percent coming in.
Okay.
It's actually coming down towards our site. So we have a ridge line here right where the property line is to keep all our water on our site. And then a little driveway entrance going towards Manly Street. And the same thing happens on the suddenly side. It's all draining towards the property.
Okay. You have somebody here for the traffic?
Yes, we do.
What, with a six percent pulling trucks out of a warehouse, are they going to have, are they going to be crawling and just trying to get out on a Manly Street or will they be able to come out with ease?
Yep. So for the record, Jason Adams with Manly Associates. So we evaluated the site distance both for vehicles traveling along Manly Street and for the trucks entering onto Manly Street. There is more than adequate site distance in both cases of stopping site distance along Manly Street. So a truck that is pulling out, plenty of visibility for vehicles to see that truck. There's also plenty of visibility for the truck to evaluate whether or not they can enter the traffic flow of Manly without disrupting the speed. So certainly, they're not going to come roaring out, but there is plenty of visibility at the driveway for both parties to make a safe and efficient movement.
But I was thinking, when the truck stops, because Manly Street has a lot of traffic on it, so for the most part, sometimes they'll just be at a wheel right out, but a lot of times they'll be stopping and getting started again when they got a six percent, you said?
Six percent.
Then is that doable?
Yeah, we feel it's doable.
Okay. I just wanted for the record.
Yeah, and we wanted to be sure of that as well when we were out there in the field, making sure that, you know, Paul and his team were having enough visibility to design with and, you know, feel comfortable with that.
The six percent is.
Yep.
Okay.
So again, the plan over here shows on the west side.
Just one second while you're on that driveway. Trucks coming out and going south on Manly Street. Is there going to be enough radius there for them to come out without crossing into the other lane?
Right, yep.
I mean, even so far as to giving them extra, you know, more of a turning access place because that, I mean, that's the traffic on the, you know, people don't really consider a truck being dangerous, but they hurt when you hit them.
Correct.
Yeah. Well, then your plan's out there, there should be a vehicle movement plan that would show the vehicles exiting the property and then has the fire trucks coming in and something like that. So we do have that plan available, shown.
C 601.
Yep.
Because it depends on, I mean, fire trucks, longest fire truck is 47 feet. But a tractor trailer, what I like to call a west coast tractor trailer that's got 30 feet of tractor and another 50 something feet of trailer behind it, they have a tendency to use up lanes trying to come out. I don't know if, what you know, I mean, but it seems to be nowadays, the tractor-trailers combinations are getting longer and longer. I mean, the tractors now are almost as long as what trailers used to be with a tractor. That's the only thing I'm looking, is whether you got enough without them having to swing into that other lane.
No, we do have large radiuses here. Again, if I go back to the layout and materials plan, I believe the radiuses are 50 feet at the entrance.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so we have, it's actually 40 feet. So it's actually wider here is the 30-foot entrance here, kind of give them a little bit more room to come out towards the center here and to make that turn. But we do have compound radiuses here where it goes from 40, it's got a little straight segment, and then it goes to a 50-foot radius there too. So we've accommodated.
Is that going to be one-way in and one-way out?
No, it's two-way traffic. Two-way traffic both. This will be two-way traffic for regular vehicles going to park in and the two-way traffic for the loading trucks, the semi trucks.
Okay. On your sheet, C 601, you show a green line and a red line track. The green line track stays, they're able to stay on their own, in their own lane. The red line track, they go in.
The red lines, the front tires, and the green lines are the red tires.
Okay. So when he comes out of there, he's got to go all the way across the road?
He's going halfway into the other lane, yes.
G U L?
This is actually wider than a standard road. There's a shoulder out here on Manly Street, I believe.
Okay.
What I'm just wondering is, it looks like you've got enough space to give yourself, change the radius enough so that they can actually be getting more straight before they hit Manly Street, you know? They're going to be on your property.
Yeah.
Know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so you want me to stop cutting this radius here longer?
Yeah, so you get those, it's just, I'm just looking at it as the safety end of, one accident's too many.
Yeah.
So if you get, if those guys, I mean, if a tractor trailer comes out and no other tractor trailer is coming in, he can hug the left-hand side and then make an easy sweep going out.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just, I mean, you've got the, it looks like you've got the space. You could almost, a turning lane except it's for going out instead of coming in.
Yeah. We could actually accommodate, we could talk about it.
Yeah, because I think, I'm just thinking of, I mean, that's one of the straightest sections of Manly Street.
Yeah.
So.
And it gets traffic and they drive very quickly.
And you've got all those postal trucks, and they seem to all leave at the same time, so.
All right. I know we interrupted you.
No, no.
You were going good on a roll, so I get it.
So again, I was just explaining on the westly side here, we have our wetland resource areas where we've gone to conservations. We've had our first meeting in the beginning of September. We did continue the hearing because we wanted to go in front of the planning board to see if there's any recommendations or accommodations that we need to make on our plans before the Conservation Commission closes the hearing. The Conservation Commission did send the plans out and the drainage calculations to be peer reviewed by Avery Engineering Consultants. They came back with saying that our design was in compliance with stormwater regulations and the West Bridgewater regulations. They just had a couple of recommendations that we're going to take here on a revised set of plans, which included the clean out on the subsurface infiltration systems that are located underneath here. We had four inches proposed on our plan. They wanted us to increase it to six inches, so we said that we could easily accommodate that. And then there was a depth note on one of our subsurface infiltration systems. We called for 12 inches of gravel, but we only actually need six inches, and that's what our design called for. So we just have to correct that type of graphic error on the plan. Other than that, everything else is pretty, they were satisfied with everything else.
Okay.
So that concludes my presentation. If the board has any additional comments, I'll do.
One of the things we're always very aware of is lighting.
Yeah.
I know you have.
We have a photo metrics plan showing there.
It's in here somewhere, I saw it.
It should be C 505, I think it is? C 106 is the photo metrics. And the lights have been designed to be dark sky compliant. They're all facing downward. Some lights will have shields on them to protect from emitting lights off the property and stuff. But we do have the photo metrics showing the foot candles and what the light intensity's going to be throughout the parking lot.
Seven.
Seven, sorry.
There are still a couple of houses, residential properties across the street, so.
We don't have any lights out there. The only light we do have showing will be the one that's at the entrance here. We do have a light there, but other than that, all the lights are interior on the building and along the basic road.
So you have them both placed?
Yeah.
And you got them shielded so that's.
Shielded down, downward, yeah.
Okay. You have building mounted.
Yeah, all mounted, yeah.
So they're going to be shining.
They're going to be facing downward still. They're not floodlights facing outward. There are going to be lights, they're going to be the exact same lights that are shown here that are dark sky compliant, and they're all face downward. So based on the height, that's where the lights will be emitted outward.
Is this going to be a 24-hour operation or is it going to be, is it going to happen? I know it won't be nine to five, but what are you looking for?
So we don't currently have a tenant for the building, but I think in buildings typically like this, it tends to be, it tends to always be someone within the building. So it won't likely be like a 24-hour non-stop machine, but there will be a presence on site most likely 24 hours. It'll probably be two to three shifts a day type of thing.
Usually two shifts. But there's always people in the building all night long, like loading up and getting ready, getting everything pulled off and getting assembled for the next morning. They always have a crew at night inside the building.
Because one of the things, during our site plan review, one of the big hangups is everybody with the lighting because we're lighting too much and shining too much. And if you weren't going to be 24-hour, dim the lights down. You don't need, you don't need the electric bill either of doing it all, but you do need security. You need, you do need safety lighting, but you don't need the full thing. So is it any provisions in here? I know this is site plan review, but in your building, do you have any provisions for dimming it, dimming them down?
Yeah, we dim the time clocks and, you know, solar. But if you wanted to accept a condition that says that we would extinguish the lights within one hour of closing of the shift except for security, yeah.
Yeah, non-operating to go to a standby or just a.
Yeah, like a night circuit, right.
Security type thing.
I think it's helpful that this grade is much higher at the street and so our building isn't going to feel so big because it's set down. I think that'll help some of those conditions.
Yeah.
How high is the building?
Forty-seven, was it? I think it's, I thought it was 41. But the other thing.
So it's still going to be over 25 feet sticking out of there?
It will be.
So it isn't as if somebody's going to be looking over the roof?
That's true. But the one other thing I'd just add with the truck port location is that we put it on the northern side of the building somewhat intentionally because that's further from the houses, so that truck traffic and those lights will be away from the housing and then just regular parking is on the southern side.
Okay.
So the elevation plan shows 41 feet and 44 feet.
Sorry, yep.
Forty-four.
And you said it's 12 feet.
That's nestled down into the grade.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that going to affect the solar that's there or?
No, it's not. We did some studies on that and have confirmed it will not affect the solar field.
Are you going to be putting solar on your roof?
Our roof will be partially solar ready, but we don't have plans right now to put solar on the roof, but we may explore that later.
That's a big open field.
It is, yeah.
Okay. Inside, do you have any floor drains for the, in the building? Any provisions for?
We do, but we're not planning on having cars drive, or cars or trucks drive into the building. We have an overhead door so that, you know, they can pull up, but we don't have any plans to have them drive inside. But we do have, we do have floor drains.
Okay. And is the floor drains hooked in your drainage with?
Substances. Floor drains will be tied into the substances because the floor drains are only sanitary and associated with bathrooms and stuff. So there's no floor drains associated with vehicles going into the building.
No, but I'm tired thinking to a merchandise in there, if something, if something breaks open or if it, if you get a lot of snow and everything, is it, any provision for drainage in there or is it, could it be a driveway?
Not typically, no.
Could it be a driveway?
Yeah.
Okay. Because otherwise, we'd be looking for what kind of containment you have on it. Any containment that's going to be contained in your outside drainage?
Okay.
Okay. I guess tomorrow we leave, we have got a good show. I believe we have some others. Did anybody?
What's on top, you haven't seen, anything that we got in since the last meeting?
Okay. No, but I want to.
I don't remember off the top of my head, but I don't think there is a lot.
Did any of the other town boards reply?
No.
Selectmen didn't have?
I know that I would have been right on top if they had.
Those 17 prints that you had to submit and distribute it to all the committees. And if they don't have any concerns, we never hear from them, but every once in a while there is something. Just checking the files just to make sure we don't miss any of them. I don't see anything there, although I do have an invoice for you for the sum of $141.84. And this is for the publishing in the newspaper and the certified mailing. So I can have that. Okay, is anybody here from the public that has any concerns, any questions, any comments? Yes, sir. If you please identify yourself.
Yes, Dave Sweeney, and I'm with Fox Run Easton. And the first thing I'd tend to like to know is, what's the relationship to our, you know, location? Because we do have.
What is your address?
15 Country Street, which is easton.
Okay.
Okay, we're butters. And we do have an extension of our property line, which is a right-of-way that extends very much towards the industrial park that you're talking about.
Actually, I think you're looking at the United Drive one.
Right.
This is Manly Street. This is way up at, almost to the Brockton line. In fact, part of this property actually was in a Brockton and they put the solar fields up there, up by where the post office is on Manly Street. If you come by the, if you come by the post office, little bit of woods, then you'll see the solar field, then you'll see the husbarn, Joe Spady's husbarn and Joe Spady's house. What this is, is the husbarn and the house is the property.
Oh, okay, okay.
So I think you want the yellow one, which is United Drive, because you're southeast.
Right, right.
Okay, yeah. It will be the yellow one. I'll give you, I'll give you an opportunity to.
Right, thank you.
At that time. Is there any further comments or questions, concerns? Paul, would you be able to have those things done by the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Looking at increasing the radiuses onto Manly Street and update the vehicle movement plan.
And pretty much, I believe.
Will they be done with conservation?
Well, conservation would be the night before you because our conservation.
Because now under the new water rule. Now, under the new water rules that were adopted by the town within the last couple of months, they have, we don't finalize until they're happy.
Yes, so our.
Because we used to do all the drainage.
Yeah.
Now they do all the drainage.
Yeah.
So when we had charge of the drainage, we could say yes, no, or indifferent, but now we have to make sure that they're happy.
Yeah, but they're works the night before you.
Yeah, so their meeting.
If they're happy, then we're happy.
I think they're happy.
I've spoken to the former Concom agent and the new Concom agent, and they assured me that it had been reviewed. There was a couple of minor things that were being addressed and they had no problem.
Yeah.
So I think you'll come in and that will be, be in place or at least we'll have it verbally that will be in place and we'll.
Yeah. So the next Concom meeting is thirteen days from today, and then the next planning board meeting will be the day right after.
Fourteen days.
Yeah, they have to meet more often now because they got more work to do. Used to be a lot easier for them. They just waited for us and then looked at what we decided.
Okay, so is there any other questions, concerns of the board that we wanna get out of the way so that when we?
You mentioned parking, I think on the western side of the building for emergency.
Yeah, so the parking, we have parking in accordance with zoning, but we're looking to get relief from constructing it at the time. So now you can see on the plan here, we've got future parking areas denoted here, which is all on the westley side. So we're gonna pave the road to provide emergency access around your building, but this will be landscaped, grassed areas. And if the tenant decides that they do need those parking spaces because they're at capacity, they will construct.
If you pave the line after you have a tenant and make your decision.
Yes, correct. But the whole drainage system, everything's being designed as everything was being constructed today, full pavement, everything is designed in accordance with the.
And you needed those for, to be compliant, those parking spaces, that number you needed.
Yes.
But if you don't have that many people working.
Yeah, that number is very high. Your zoning is very high for what we typically would see, and we just wanna keep more green space and have less impervious.
Well, the thing is, you're only talking ten thousand square feet of office.
Right.
So for ten thousand feet of office, that's what?
Fifty spaces?
Forty spaces.
Oh, let's see, fifty spaces, because it's one for two hundred, so two hundred divided by.
And warehouse is, that's a, it's always been a thing, because I mean, if it's, if you're full of racking and equipment. And nowadays.
Probably only have like fifty employees maybe at most, right?
Yeah.
I'm glad to see that you have the provisions for it, not that, you haven't designed it out so you've got no room to, no wiggle room, you've got wiggle room with it.
Correct.
So I, you know, I don't think we have any problem with that and we'll, you know, we will make that, grant that, I guess it'll be a waiver.
Yeah.
You know, to phase it rather than doing it all at one time. We'll take care of that at the next meeting also. I, I have, I think it's a good idea, you know, I have no problem. You know, they're.
They're huge if you need it.
They're on top of it, so that's all we can ask. Okay.
Yeah, we'll take that check before the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Okay, so the time being eight oh four, we'll continue this meeting to two weeks from now at seven thirty.
Just one quick question. Now, under revised set of plans, do you know how many sets of plans you're gonna need? Do you still need seventeen or do you want three, four?
Five or seven, I think.
Yeah, six or seven. Say six in a US flag.
OK, well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the time being eight oh five, I'll open the public hearing for thirty-five United Drive. Here with me, okay. I will read the public notice as it appeared in the Brockton Enterprise on September thirteenth and September the twentieth of the year two thousand and twenty. Our notice is hereby given pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section nine, Section four point six, Water Resource Protection District, and Section seven point two, Site Plan Approval Submitted by Level B Engineering on behalf of the owner, Ajax United Drive LLC. The Westbridge Water Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the U N C in October the fifth at seven thirty P M in the Donald Brown Conference Room. The intent of the plan is to add one hundred and sixty-six new parking spaces for the property located at thirty-five United Drive. A special permit is required for activity in the Water Resource Protection District. A site plan review is part of the special permit process. A copy of the proposal is available at the Office of the Town Clerk for Review. All interested parties are invited to attend, signed by the Westbridge Water Planning Board. Yes, the opponent, tell us what.
Sure, just making sure that you're all set there. So for the record, Nick Facendola, Level Design Group, Licensed Civil Engineer in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We are representing I X Drive LLC, I X United Drive LLC, for the site plan application before the planning board this evening. Just to give you a broad overview, thirty-five United Drive is a rather large property, as I'm sure you guys are all familiar with. On this aerial photo, this is United Drive. This small outline encompasses thirty-five United. We have an existing, the parcel's approximately a hundred and eight acres. We have an existing five hundred and eighty-two thousand plus or minus square foot warehouse facility on the property. There's approximately five hundred and ninety existing parking spaces located in this parking field here. And there's a separate parking field here, which has, hasn't been utilized in a while, is not striped, but that's area can hold approximately additional than four hundred parking spaces as it exists today. Our application before the planning board this evening is to construct a parking lot, which would have a one hundred and sixty new parking spaces in this existing gravel area up in this area right here, so that's the area we're gonna be focusing on with the presentation. And that's what the plans really highlight, is specifically this area right here. Back here in the blue line, that's a perennial stream which runs along the back of the site. This red line is a large bordering vegetated wetland complex, so we have a wetland buffer zone within the project area. We do have an application in front of the Conservation Commission for buffer zone disturbance and review of our stormwater management reports of our proposed drainage system. So that's all undergoing right now. I'm sure the board is aware, but there are going to be two additional applications under review on these two parcels here and here. Those are not part of tonight's application and we'll be discussing those with the board in the future. So a little bit more highlighted view of the area in question. So we have the existing warehouse building. This view is turned ninety degrees this way from the aerial photo, so as we said, this is pointing north. So right here is this back line of the.
Well, what you have to do is do this and then.
Yeah, if that makes more sense for you, it fits better on the page this way. But this gray area here, this is an existing gravel area. This was constructed when a building addition was constructed for this facility when it was Chadwick's way back when. There was, on those approved plans, there was a proposed, or excuse me, approved, proposed future building addition, which would run through here. And when that was constructed, I believe in the early nineties, the site was graded, filled, and the water line was looped far beyond the existing buildings, so it was an existing water line and fire hydrant right here. And this whole area is fenced in, so this is all existing gravel today. What I have highlighted here is the edge of the wetland line here. We have a hundred-year FEMA flood elevation of seventy-four, which we're well above with all our proposed work. This is the fifty-foot no disturb zone through conservation and a hundred-foot wetland buffer, so those are the highlighted lines on this plan. So for the record, this whole area, it's about sixty thousand square feet, this that we're gonna be looking at in the back here for this proposed parking lot.
Is the gravel roadway that goes, connects that parking lot to the front parking lot still going to be maintained?
Correct, so I'll jump back to this view here. So right here, this where my finger is, that's where it transitions to gravel. So from here over, this is all pavement and that will still be active.
No, I'm talking on the other side, inside the L.
Correct, that will still be maintained for fire.
And I noticed that they're repaving up there, and they have paved up along the bottom part of the L. Is that going all the way up to the, which was the original Chadwick's building?
Down in this corner right here?
Yes.
I can't say for sure.
They've torn up and repaved the parking lot.
I think that's just standard maintenance, that they're just resurfacing.
They totally ground up and put new layers of blacktop on the, this one, this, no. All the way, everything that's paved, blacktop has been torn up and repaved.
All the way through here?
No, no, on the front side, where the office entrance is all in here.
Yes.
And they also go up the side of that, the bottom part, I'm calling it the L right there, goes right up until the intersection. While I'm saying that, that has always been, the nursing quarters for Chadwick's was in that older addition.
Correct.
No, up, the back part up in here. And the ambulances used to back up, and that's how they used to pick up the patients, instead of bringing them all the way through the whole building. And I noticed when I went through there today, that it looks like they have paved it up, at least as far as I could see, because they were, they had torn up the front. The immediate front in front of the offices was torn up today and they were starting to get ready to pave that. But is, where that L comes up, used to be a gravel drive, a maintained gravel that went all the way up to the area you wanna pave. So you could, you could put something heavy, a fire truck or something could drive around the building.
Yes. I will follow up with the property owner. I know the property's been recently sold and we're working for the new owners and if there are looking to.
I know it was there and it just has become overgrown, but the reason for it was just to get access to that backside. That building has had a few fires.
Yes. So we are not gonna be impeding this access around the building with anything we're gonna be doing. Whether they are paving areas that.
Well, I know it's, I know it's goes all the way up, the pavement is there, that was done Friday.
Yeah.
So it's nice and black and clean and it's there.
Yeah, I'll definitely follow up with the property owner. I wasn't aware of that type of work. I know they were gonna be doing some.
When the original building, Chadwick's was built and they built the second addition, the tall addition, I call it tall addition, the shorter addition. The shorter addition was the original Chadwick's. Then they built the second one a number of years later. And part of the plan at that time was just to maintain a, it didn't have to be paved, it just had to be accessible.
Yes.
And they decided it was easy to pave, at least up to the corner, because that was where the nurses station was. And I mean, that's, if somebody got sick, because Chadwick's at one time was running shifts of thousands of people, three shifts a day.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that place was, it was its own city, and all the parking spaces were taken. Three shifts a day.
Yeah, that's when they were utilizing this area too for parking, definitely.
Well, they had to put in their own septic system.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's.
Because the building was so big and there were so many people that they had to put in a plant type of.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's a wastewater treatment plant right here and that pumps to a large reaching area right through here. But yeah, I'll confirm what's going on back here, because they shouldn't be paving areas that weren't paved. I mean, if it's all broken up, it almost looks like.
Well, it was paved before.
Okay.
I mean, it's a driveway that was there, but it only went up to the corner. But as I remember, there was supposed to be accessible if you needed to get around.
Jerry, so the driveway went right along here.
Right in there, and it's, that is paved.
Are they doing something else across here now or not?
No, they've totally torn up and repaved in the, that driveway, the darker one near Cheer Pack, that is all paved and lined.
Yeah.
And the new entrance coming in, they're working on that parking that is right in this area here. Now, that is all ground up and they're grading it. I wouldn't be surprised if it's paved by the end of the week.
So that work is being done to provide additional ADA accessible spaces. That's something the building commissioner brought to the property owner's attention, that they didn't have adequate ADA spaces for the number of parking spaces that are provided at the facility for today's codes. And so some grading work has to be done. It's all within the existing paved parking areas.
Oh, yeah, it is.
They've grounded it up, but yeah, no, but that's what's going on. I know that's going on up here. I'll confirm what's going on up through here, but this, this needs to remain open to provide access around the building.
And at one time it was well, I mean, they sprayed weed killer and kept it down. It was a good solid gravel base.
Yeah.
I mean, it was everything but the pavement.
And that's kind of what this is back here where we're doing this work in the back. It's really hard packed and, you know, they were using it for overflow parking of trailers and things over the years.
Confires.
Hopefully no more of those.
Used to get two or three a week. Hydrant was well used.
When I found this in the woods, I said, what's this thing doing out here in the woods? But I guess it makes sense now that they have it there.
Well, it's very overgrown now.
Oh, yeah.
When Chadwick's was there, that was back end of the corner up in there was, was maintained.
No, but yeah, I'll definitely follow up with the owner on just the improvements that are going on. Mostly cleanup work most likely because of lack of maintenance.
Because everything's out of the building, right?
Everything's what?
Looks like everybody's moved out of the building except for the office space out front.
For the most part, yeah, the building.
The warehousing part is, they've been filling dumpsters with everything.
Yeah. What's, what this parking lot's gonna be for is, you know, the new owner, the new owner's signed a lease with MBTA, so they're gonna be using this for fleet storage vehicles, and they're gonna be taking approximately twenty-five thousand square feet of the building space within this corner over here. So this is, this facility will be utilized by the MBTA, and that's why they're doing this work in this corner.
What kind of work are they gonna be doing in the building?
In the building, I can't say for sure. I can determine, I can get that information for you.
Okay, because it's only certain things you're allowed to do in this zone. So as a warehouse, you're okay, but if they're changing it to a maintenance facility or something, that is gonna be.
I don't believe it's a maintenance facility, but I'll get that information.
Yeah, because it can't be any maintenance.
Yeah, we'll provide you guys that information. I'm sorry, I don't have that on time.
I mean, this is really, we should be, that's another site plan.
So, in fact, you just, you, I heard that apparently there were some more plans submitted to the building department for this.
For separate projects.
Is it on this site though?
Is it on this, no, it's not on this site, A and R, these two pieces. And they're beyond these lots and these have been issued new addresses as of earlier this week. So there's a project that's going to be here.
Yeah, we, yeah, we do right here.
And there's a project that's.
Well, we haven't voted on it.
We haven't seen it yet.
Okay.
Maybe we should do that first, but yeah, there's, there's going to be a project.
We're putting the cat before the horse now because the parking, what is in the building is going to, is going to delegate what's the parking.
So you're not, you're not utilizing this parking area for this building?
No, no, we have, like I said, we have five hundred ninety spaces here.
It's going to be segregated into two distinct owners and different operations.
Correct, it will be three, it'll be one, two, three.
Okay.
And what's the lot, the one behind you, you can't land lock it if it's your.
Well, this, this is going to be connected to this parcel here and there'll be easements for sewage and everything that, that comes from this facility.
I think he gets from wetlands and.
That flows through there.
Yeah, but if there's an existing septic system, you can't land lock it, it's going to have access.
Correct, access will be maintained.
I, I think, does the septic system there only, only work for, for this building?
Yes, yes.
It doesn't take this?
They have their own.
It doesn't take this, no.
It's only this building.
This is on the other end of the building.
Correct, so there's a little package wastewater treatment facility right here, large, I think it's a twenty thousand gallon tank.
It was designed for three shifts of multi-thousand people.
Correct, which is, and it will be, it's, it'll be utilized for these two additional projects because there's so much capacity in that system.
Okay, so my, my question is, it will not be for the other side, it'll only be for the two on the sub-belly side?
The septic system?
Yes.
No.
No, it's already tied into that building.
It is tied, so it will be for that also.
Correct.
Okay, so it will be a community system for those three lots?
Correct.
Okay.
I think we're kind of getting beyond the, the scope here, I mean, the, the application is for site plan review of this. I know there's a lot of questions.
No, it's water, it's, it's the water issue and, and water protection district issue that any division of that property is, is involved. Site plan itself is one thing, but we're, we're responsible because our well is sitting right there and across the street.
Correct, yes.
How, what are your numbers for the, for the parking?
The parking lot?
For the density, you got a, you got a table somewhere with this one.
So there's five hundred ninety spaces existing and we're proposing another one hundred and sixty-six for this new parking area right here.
Basically, you're paving that area there, not as much for the additional parking, but the convenience of the parking.
Convenience for the new tenant, yes.
Because it wouldn't be great for him to have to go all the way to the other end.
Correct, that's, that's, that's the goal for, for this project here.
So, just say, so that, I want to make sure Donna gets the numbers right because you're.
Five hundred ninety existing parking spaces.
One hundred and sixty-six additions.
And then a hundred and sixty-six addition.
And what is required?
It's one per thousand plus three, one space per, three employees for each addition.
Do the math for us.
Correct, but as you said, the building's empty, so right now you need about five hundred and eighty-two spaces for the building plus a handful of spaces for the employees that are here. I mean, the employee count is always going to, going to fluctuate, so.
Yeah, well, it's different, when Chadwick's was in full operation.
Yes.
There were a lot of employees because it was a clothing place with hundreds of people picking and shipping and doing. Presently, in the tenant that has just, even the two tenants that have recently moved out were very limited because they did a lot of production on the inside.
Yes.
One end was fertilizer and stuff, type of stuff. And so it was, you didn't have to have a hundred people working a shift, they, if they had fifteen.
Correct, so, you know, that leaves in excess of, you know, with these spaces, a hundred and seventy-two spaces, divide that by three, they can have almost, you know, seven hundred, six hundred employees, six hundred plus employees per their largest shift, which is likely not going to happen here.
No, I don't think anything like Chadwick's will, will be there.
Correct, we can provide additional data once we get more tenants. Like we said, most of the building is currently empty, so we don't have that future, you know, we don't have any future leases or anything of that nature, but we feel confident that with this one hundred and sixty spaces and the five hundred and ninety down below, that this, any use can be satisfied here with that, with those seven hundred spaces.
Has this been submitted to the conservation commission?
Yes.
And have they sent it out for review?
Yes, it's been sent to Alan and Major. They received a phone call from them today, they haven't really dug into their review, so.
So, so that, that's still in limbo right?
Correct, that's still up in the air and, and being worked out. So we're hoping to have all that wrapped up in the next, say, three, three to four weeks hopefully.
Are you going to be putting lighting into this, this area?
We're not proposing any lighting, we're just essentially going to maintain the wall pack lights that are on the existing building. If you'd like, we can develop a photometric plan of what would be there.
What is, what is, what is there, is that sufficient? Have you looked at it to see if that is sufficient to light the area?
Yes, the property owner does believe that's sufficient and, you know, we don't have, you know, we're, I'd say, that's a good five hundred feet or so, plus or minus six hundred feet away from any.
It's all industrial.
It's all, it's all wooded and densely vegetated through here, so there wouldn't be any.
What kind of lights are they, because that was put up quite a while ago. Are they, do they have a, you know, the, the.
Fox tops.
Tops, are they spotlights shining out across the?
I can't say for sure, we will confirm.
We, we'd like that, that address because we do not want the, the, the spotlights. Because even at a, at a, five, six hundred feet, you can still, you know, you look out and you got this great light shining.
Yeah, we, we'll recommend to the owner that they upgrade those lights with, you know, LED, with LED lights with cutoffs, you know, to save energy and to provide a more consistent down shed light. And then we can also get a photometric plan over to you guys, that, that, just, just for the record, that details how this, this area will be lit.
I think if I remember right, they're those old style lights that mount on the building with the glass that comes down this way. So they, they're not really a flood, but they, they're, the old style parking lights are put up in the nineties.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's why, and, and that's why the question is, is that, if you get snow storage for this parking area without dumping it into the wetlands?
So, snow storage would be somewhere up in this corner here and we would utilize essentially just this back bank of spaces if needed through here. You know, it's, we're, we feel like we're going to have an excess amount of parking spaces throughout this area, so.
Is it a sufficient area though?
Yeah, but the, the thing is, the snow storage has got to include where the trailer parking is now. It's got to be a combination handle the snow for any of that on that side.
All right, so the trailer parking.
I mean, we're, we're only looking at, we're only looking at paving that one section, but you've got that rest of it that's got to be cleaned up and put someplace.
Correct, up through here. So we'll follow up with you guys on what the maintenance plan.
Because I don't think you could come to the United Drive End of it because there's a wetland something, or there's a retention area right there.
Drainage, drainage pond right here.
Yeah.
And this red line is wetland, so yeah, we can't push it in here, we definitely wouldn't ever push it into the wetlands. You know, there is substantial room down through here, this vegetated area back through here and they can push it down in this corner right through here.
But, but the, the thing with snow is they only want to push it, if it, they go to the edge of the parking, parking lot, that's where they want to dump it, they don't want to, they don't want to transport it, so. But, you know, demonstrate that on there that you can, you can take care of the snow storage without, and I'm sure the Concon is going to want to see where it is true because they don't want.
Yeah, and there's, there's room at the back of the parking lot through here, this area is all graded out. I mean, it's not going into the wetlands, so, you know, and then this is some area right through here where this pink area, we're going to be removing pavement, making islands right in this area and this area here, so you could, you know, snow storage.
You have a, you got a, a bit of an area from the parking, edge of the parking lot to the building. How, how wide is that, is that sufficient to pile, to press it up against there?
This area here?
Yeah.
No, this is, this is a walkway along the back end.
You're going to have a walkway.
Correct, yes, this is going to be a walkway.
So you can't say, everything's got to go somewhere also.
Correct, yeah, we have this corner up through here and, but yeah, no, we'll, we'll definitely look over here. You know, we're looking at utilizing this area right through here. There's no driving things right here, so we get identified.
The only problem with that is there is the drainage, I believe drains away from the building, so any snow you have is going to create an icing condition, so you're going to have to go on the outside of the driveway.
Well, no, this, this all drains down through here.
Yeah, and if you've got cars going to go around there and it's an icing condition and there's sanding truck from the landscape, but that hasn't shown up yet.
Yeah, I mean, in this area that would drain towards this, we're putting a new catch basin in right here, so, I mean, it would have to travel, you know, fifty, sixty feet or so across through here. So this is a planned detailing, proposed site grades and stormwater management system. So right now, there's, there's nothing in that area, so it's all just gravel, drains off into the wetland. So we're going to provide a fully compliant stormwater management system, new catch basins, stormwater treatment units, subsurface infiltration with a new discharge overflow located in this area. So this would be a great improvement to what's there. But as far as snow storage goes, yeah, we're looking at up in this graded area up through here, we're going to be removing some of that gravel that's not needed, pushing snow through there, up through here and, you know, along the back edge over here. But I'll also confirm what's going to happen with the main loading area. To define, you know, what their maintenance plan is and what they're telling their contractors to do with the snow within, within this area. Does anyone understand the concern most likely? This gravel area was probably used as a snow dump in the past, so.
I think they, all they did was pushed it up until they hit the gravel area, that's where the snow piled because nobody, there was no, there's only an overhead door that was very seldom used.
Yeah, and that's why we're utilizing this area here, so they probably pushed it kind of right, right in this area right up through here. We're proposing our snow, we, a large portion of the snow storage up in this area.
Are you proposing any, any change to the entrance coming out around the United Drive or are you leaving all of that as?
No, all of the, all the work is focused up, up here, there's no changes to the, the site access.
All the, nothing of the change?
Nothing's changing with, with these driveways, this, this, the main entry, any of that stuff. The only work is, like I said, for this limited project is, is right in this back corner right here. And it's mostly paving and the new drainage system and.
I just wanted to get it on the record that did it, just confining. And you don't have a tenant yet, they don't have a tenant yet for this?
For this portion.
Oh yeah, you do.
It's, yeah, MBTA would be utilizing.
So we, we got to, we got to find out what, what, what that is.
Correct.
Yeah, we need to know their MSDS's and all the stuff.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have any proposed.
That reflects, that reflects the Water Protection District.
Understood, yeah.
What the tenant does.
Correct, and we'll, we'll get more information on that to, to the board and detail what's going on. There's no proposed drive-in doors, so it's not a maintenance facility.
There's only one, one overhead door that's in the, above the middle, I think.
Yeah.
Or maybe not even a middle, it's about a third of the way up, I believe.
Correct, yeah, up and along this area here where it's, I think we can see here this concrete pad right there.
No, I think it's around the corner, it's around the, it's off that dirt path that you're doing.
Oh, okay.
Because I was in there today and there was somebody running a forklift in and out of that door.
Oh, right here, this concrete pad here, right there, there's two bollards next to it that exist there.
There's a whole tractor trailer load that looked like foam. Those two inch sheets of foam, they were taken inside the building.
Taken it out, okay, that's probably interior work that was being done, new insulation.
But I know there was, it would, whatever it was, the forklift was going in and out of that end of the building.
Okay.
Okay. Did you get your question answered?
I did, thank you very much.
Okay.
I got a private briefing.
Yes ma'am.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I'm here because of the abutting property south of the property across the street. And it's my understanding, there were supposed to be two proposals discussed at night?
Well, no, I, I believe it, it has been submitted to the building, Donna, we haven't seen it yet. We know, we know that something came, came in, but we don't know what it is yet, we haven't.
We got two different letters, so that I was.
Mine should be probably ConCon.
Okay.
Mine would have been the S and then ConCon.
So that would be on a different date?
The new stuff that came in will publish new information.
ConCon is usually on Tuesdays, like the first Tuesday of the month, where the first Wednesday.
Yeah, ConCon was last night.
Yeah.
But you will be receiving additional notices as we discuss for future projects to be heard on different applications.
Did you have any other questions or just, or concerns or interest? Because it is a public hearing.
Right, I know, we're, we're just, because our property is landlocked, there's no way of monitoring it or driving by or posting stone signs or, or anything so that our concern is dumping or, or.
So actually, the next public hearing is probably the one you'd be more interested in.
Yeah, well, yeah, because it's all, because we're in a butter of the entire property.
See, the butters list goes up five hundred feet from the property.
Right.
So it goes into east and goes in the east.
Right, but our property is in west.
Okay, I think we kind of, you know what you.
Yeah, so I'll get you information on lighting, information on how the tenant will use the property.
What they're actually going to do.
Correct.
What activities are they going to conduct.
And we'll kind of, we'll look at the snow storage plan for the main facility for this area, but, you know, for the most part, for this parking lot, we'll be looking at areas here, here and, you know, there'll be likely some storage in this back corner right through here if, if needed.
And you check the lights?
And the lights, correct. Is there anything else?
And.
Oh, there's no, all right.
I didn't want you to feel left out.
And I will get you.
The green and.
Yes, we, light, we didn't, we have not received all the slips yet, but I'll show you, I'll give you the email link.
Okay, that's fine, that's all I need is that you sent them out.
Okay, so I'm going to continue this hearing. Can you have everything in probably two weeks, do you think?
Two weeks, um.
Or you want to go online?
Oops, I'm sorry.
I know you don't want that piece of.
Let's shoot for two weeks and if for some reason something comes up, it's all pretty straightforward, lighting, information on the tenant.
The only thing is, out of fairness to, to the abutters, if we put it in the agenda, we're going to, we're going to have something. If you don't want it, you'll, you'll have to let us know by Friday before.
Okay.
And at which point it won't be in the agenda, and the agendas are posted on the town website.
Yes.
So check the agenda, it'll come out on Monday, so check the agenda. If it, if it isn't there, we're not going to talk to them, but if it is there, we will.
And I gave these guys cards, you feel more than welcome to call the office, give me questions, if you need copies of anything, let us know.
So the, it'll be continued to the nineteen.
Nineteenth.
October the nineteenth.
Yes.
And we'll say it's seven thirty, because the others, neither, neither one of you hopefully should be that long, so. We open our meeting at seven thirty, so it'll be continued to then.
Okay.
And the other one will be first and you'll be second.
All right, great, and we'll notify you the Friday before if we want to postpone. Okay.
For now, we're, we're assuming you're going to, but unless we, yeah, definitely, we won't put it in until you. But unless we, yeah, definitely, we won't put it in until you.
Okay.
Definitely.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. And thank you. With that being said, we'll adjourn the public hearings. And we got, oh, and we'll go into the, Craig Lemey.
Nick?